Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January 17th, 2017. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. We're going to start with the pledge, and I'm going to invite the young ladies from Field School Girl Scout Troop 50361, who've been our guests for the last couple hours. Come on up, ladies. Remember where you're going. Remember where you're going, we practiced this. That's pretty good. That's pretty good. All right, where's our Mayor Kate? Raise your hand. Kate was our mayor earlier today. It's becoming a bit of a repeat, but Kate and her council passed a law that all kids at Field School get extra ice cream for a week. And surprisingly, it was not a unanimous vote. It was 10 to 3, so I'd say overwhelming majority. All right, I would ask that you all rise. Alderman Kate, are you ready? I mean, Mayor Kate, are you ready? All right, start us off.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Dismissed. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to call the roll.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy, absent.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. On to agenda item three. I'm going to ask Officer McCollum and Chief Ruth to join me up here. And family, don't let me forget family. Come on up. All right, we're getting a new police sergeant tonight. Come on up. I moved it earlier. So it needs to be a bit of a back. Careful. For workers' complaints. I'm going to give breathing's final against COVID-19.
Hernia.
You okay? Okay, we're very fortunate to have Officer Matthew McCollum here. Sorry. Why don't you, before we promote you tonight, which is fantastic, why don't you tell us who we have here this evening?
My family, my wife Amy in the center, my dad Dan, stepmom Nancy, my mom Sue, uncle Jim, and in the back, my mother-in-law Deb, brother-in-law Brian, and father-in-law Tom.
Fantastic. Please go ahead. Thank you. We're very proud of Matt McCollum and his rank of promotion to the rank of police sergeant. We've got a very fine show of members of the Elmhurst Police Force, both active and some retired, friends as well, and look forward to your position. Okay, great. Well, good. I gave this to him. All right, now before we get started, I've got a whole laundry list, but a few things I want to mention about soon-to-be Sergeant McCollum. Things I wanted to highlight, he's been awarded the O.I., M.A.T.T.
That's M-A-T-T.
M.A.T.T. award for outstanding DUI enforcement, as well as five official commendations, four letters of recognition, and nine unit citations for outstanding performance. So, without any further ado, I'd say you can raise your right hand or your feet after me. I am Matthew McCollum.
I am Matthew McCollum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Elmhurst.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Elmhurst.
And I will fulfill, and I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer.
The duties of the office of police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Do I book it, Eugene? No. Turn to the side. All right, thanks for all the support, everybody. You're going to pull up. All right, come on up.
Good move, Matt. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Officer.
Congratulations, Officer. I mean Sergeant. Good work, good luck. Want to move back up?
Well done, Matt.
Watch your glasses. Somebody's glasses.
Still carrying that plaque?
Congratulations.
And they're not. Congratulations.
How do you take in the initiative?
You'll have to talk to them.
You weren't there, Charlie. Get her back.
I know. Abby, then.
She wants to see you.
There, too. I just, I didn't see them.
Steve.
Amy Hill.
Good job, guys. Okay, on to agenda item four. Written communication. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit to our clerk for further distribution? Please raise your hand. Okay, come on up. Sure, you got something else, too? Okay, anyone else? Any written communication? What's going on here? This is why I need paper. Yeah, I do. Just got to pull up. Okay, on to agenda item five. Public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any issue you may choose. We ask that when you're called on, you go to the microphone over to my right, your left, announce your name, because we are recording. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, out of respect for the work that we have to do here this evening, and out of respect for other folks who may want to speak. We ask that you direct your comments to the dais, not to the audience, and I'll remind folks that this is not a Q and A, this is just an opportunity to make a statement. You have three minutes. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I will keep time, and if you run over three minutes, I'll give you a gentle prompt and ask you to wrap up. Clerk Spencer, I think I know the answer. At this time, is there anybody who wishes to address the council?
Yes, and we'll start with Chloe Grotto, 177 East St. Charles Road. I don't know these people.
The other mic. Right here. Right back in there.
I apologize. Hello, my name is Chloe Grotto, and I am speaking on behalf of Brew Point Coffee Shop tonight. I just wanted to give a few remarks of my personal experience with Brew Point Coffee, and how I feel that their business here in Elmhurst has really benefited us as a community. So, like I said, my name is Chloe Grotto. I am actually a recently graduated student of York Community High School and the University of Illinois. I actually began my experience with Brew Point Coffee in the middle of my sophomore year of college, when I came home for break. I was looking just for an ordinary job, a way to support myself through college and pay for, you know, those really expensive school books. What I did not expect to find was a family and a community, and something that could really bring me back to this town of Elmhurst. Elmhurst, when I was growing up, was a very small town. I really kind of had a hard time sometimes finding activities when I was younger, places to kind of even go as like a teenager, places to study, stuff like that. But as this community has grown so much with new businesses coming in, there are so many ways that I can now exercise my free time, and so many places I feel like I can go and other students can go. So, my journey with Brew Point Coffee, I started out there as the sole worker in my family, but eventually getting to know Melissa, the owner, I developed a great relationship with her and the staff, and like I said, they became my family. So, they actually ended up hiring both of my sisters, who are younger than me, and one of them is now in high school, and the other one is actually also at U of I. So, we all kind of not only grew as a family, but we grew to know these other coffee shop workers and Melissa, the owner. And the character counts I learned through all of my middle school and high school and elementary school teachings that Elmhurst really prides themselves on, that all really came together just at this one little coffee shop. I found that, I found more and more high school kids coming, college kids, parents, just, it was a great place for even businessmen and women to come and just really cultivate and kind of stand together. So, I just wanted to give my kind of two cents of what a great impact this little coffee shop has had on this community, and I think just their expansion could bring even more promise to this community. Thank you.
Elizabeth Ambrosi, 257 North York Street.
Good evening. I am here to speak briefly about the hoop house of the Virgil family, who I've just met once about a week ago or so. I understand that they have a hoop house in their backyard, something similar to a greenhouse, with different stipulations, and I understand that there's some kind of, I guess, issues with the city and the Virgil family about them perhaps not being up to code, or not being able to have the hoop house. So, I'm an avid gardener, and I hope that city council can do whatever necessary in order for the city of Elmhurst to, for residents to be able to have hoop houses. I was very surprised that they are not allowed. We are homeowners, I know, it's a part of gardening, our backyards, so I'm really shocked that they're not, not allowed. And I was so curious by the slight publicity, if you will, about this hoop house, that I reached out to the Virgil family, introduced myself, and they were kind enough to invite me over to their home, and it really is a beautiful home, a beautiful backyard, beautiful landscaping, very environmentally friendly greenhouse, with, I think, very pricey solar paneling on the house. Overall, the house is exemplary, I think, what we as a city residents and businesses, how we should move forward. So, please consider that. I ask that you please work with whoever is responsible to make this happen. I do see that hoop houses, greenhouse, I think will be more prevalent in the future, and I hope to have one myself. Thank you.
Juliette Ambrosi, 257 North York Street.
Pardon me, one thing I forgot to add is that I asked you to refrain from just public outbursts, because there's going to be pros and cons on everything, and I don't want to get into a back and forth. We certainly appreciate that you're here and that you want to speak, but we ask that no clapping in between, just so we can hear everything. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Juliette Ambrosi at 257 North Oak Street. I'm just here to show my support for the Virgil family's hoop house. I'm 22 years old, I feel very passionate about this. I'm studying sustainability, and I believe that the hoop house is a very important step to our future.
Jessica Ambrosi, 257 North York Street.
Hi, I'm Jessica Ambrosi, and just like Juliette and Liz said, that I'm here for support of the hoop house. As a nurse, I see a lot of pros to gardening and natural ways to grow our food, and I, and just anyway, to have our environmental issues more of a pro in our society, so I'm here in support of that, and I really hope you consider that.
Benjamin Tanner, Tainer.
Hello, my name is Ben Tannen, and I'm here from Brew Point Coffee. I'm a manager, and more specifically, the coffee manager there, so I deal with all of our decisions coffee-wise. And you'll hear many comments tonight about Brew Point, but I'm really here to tell you about what I know best: coffee. Coffee has recently been growing exponentially in the U.S., and as this growth, Brew Point sees an excellent opportunity to really stand out with the increase of coffee shops in the nation. The first way is by serving excellent coffee. This is something we do and have proven to do through our Yelp and Facebook reviews and customer satisfaction. The second way we plan to stand out is by creating a shared roasting space to add to the coffee community, to bring in people who are passionate about coffee, to learn more about roasting, and to bring in other cafes to learn how to roast and avoid the sometimes very large overhead that goes with roasting. And the third way we plan to stand out is by having a focus on community. Being a coffee enthusiast and working in the coffee industry, I've spent tons of hours in hundreds of coffee shops, and one thing that a lot of them are really lacking is a connection to the space around them, a connection to their customers. They may serve great coffee, but that's all they do. And at Brew Point, what we really strive to do is showcase the community around us and create a space where we can bring in not just coffee fans, not just people looking for a morning jolt, but a way to really grow and expand upon the community that we have found incredibly supportive of us. So, tonight, we're asking for your help and partnership in helping us expand and create not just another coffee shop, but a place where Elmhurst can really showcase themselves and become a destination for the western suburbs and the city to see what a great community can do together. Thank you.
Desi Gaiman, 254 West Fremont.
Hi, I'm Desi Gaiman. I've been an Elmhurst resident for 30 years, and much to my embarrassment, I've never been at one of these meetings before, but I felt so compelled by the Virgil's hoop house issue that it compelled me to come, and it also compelled me to speak, which I don't normally speak publicly. So, I would just like to say that once I heard about it, you know, I was just appalled that Elmhurst wasn't supportive of it, so I started doing some research on the subject, and I found that there, there's many towns across the United States, large cities, suburbs, that all support hoop houses and allow their residents to have them. In their progressive towns, some not progressive towns, but I mean towns all across the country allow hoop houses. In one town in particular, Fort Collins, Colorado, they wanted to allow their residents to grow year-round, so they wanted to relook at their hoop house ordinance and codes. So, they held two focus groups regarding it, of which I've handed out the focus groups and actually the study to you. And after, you know, they were looked at, and many other towns they looked at included Wheat Ridge, Colorado, Seattle, Baltimore, Cleveland, Milwaukee, Boston, Asheville, the Twin Cities, Boulder, among many others, that allow them, they decided to definitely allow them in their town, and not only allow them, but support them with actually a brochure to help people learn what they were, to learn how to use them, and it's actually very, a green-friendly brochure that says, "I want to grow produce." Great, is the produce for personal? I mean, it's actually follows that, okay, are you growing produce year-round? Yes, I can use a hoop house. So then it goes on to describe what kind of hoop house structure they can have, and it's in a real simple form, not like a code or anything. So I'll also give this if you want to see it. And I almost feel like we're moving backwards in this town a little bit, even having this conversation, because in 2004, at 168 Elm Street, there was a group, it's called One Drop at a Time, put together a green rooftop. It was actually written in the Chicago Tribune in 2004. Environmentally friendly green roofs are flowering on nearly 80 buildings in Chicago, but it's a different story in the suburbs, where the concept has been slower to take root. A new demonstration rooftop garden on a home in Elmhurst hopes to demystify going green, and a garden is planned for the roof of a residential, of a commercial building in Bartlett. It actually was installed on the house, and I mean, I remember walking by it, I mean, it was amazing, it was like something I would like to do. And actually, they did, they found out many things, and actually, social-wise, that particular property educated more than 1,300 visitors through private and public site tours, including 900 visitors during the 2005 Elmhurst Garden Walk, and regular private tours that drew 15 to 25 people. It educated thousands of people worldwide about storm water management. You know, I can go on about the social benefits, there was environmental benefits, and actually, during that period, they actually also looked at any challenges.
Excuse me, you're over.
Okay.
A little bit. No, go ahead and wrap up, I just want to let you.
Okay, so I just want to say in conclusion, you know, neighbors took the site, took a wait-and-see approach regarding the installation of the green features, like the green roof. After witnessing the success of these features, local residents became more interested in adopting similar features on their own properties. So I just want to say that was back in 2004, so, you know, I just feel that, you know, we should be a little bit more progressive. Thanks.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. My New Year's wish: The council takes a new approach on governing. The endless suspension of rules, I don't know why you do it, there's nothing that can be that important. Last year, you did it endlessly. There are times, but it can't be at every meeting. No-bid contracts, they're a fallacy. You wouldn't do it if you were having things done at your own home, but you do it endlessly No rational reason for it. You can make excuses, but you can't defend it. Public property. This council believes that public property is worthless. It's giving it away endlessly, and then goes out and pays above-market price, and thinks nothing of it. Why? Would you do it with your own money? City has different bond issues. $27 million to rework the sewage treatment plant, $25 million for flooding, $80 million that was just spent. You got this town into $152 million worth of bonds, gentlemen. I don't care if I paid with taxes, I don't care if I paid with fees on my water bill. That's reality. And my water bill is starting to look like my house assessment. It's got everything on there. But why I'm paying it, nobody looks at it, they just pay it. One last thing. I had some time off, so I went down to visit our garage, six stories, just see how things were going. Took a little walk in it. The council does know that we have parking for disabled, right? It's on the first floor. But those with disabilities can't park there, because it's loaded with construction trucks. They're adding something to their garage. It wasn't one day. Went down there four days in a row. It's a $250 fine, it's posted. It's also posted that it's for disabled, not for construction trucks. In fact, I went down there today. Same malarkey. If you had an armored car, you could park in there if you're disabled. It's two and a half blocks from this city hall, and nobody cares. Why not? It's a federal law. There were no tags hanging on the mirrors, so it just goes on.
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
Sure, I will, Mayor. I'll probably go down there tomorrow and see the same thing. Because this city doesn't care, from the administration right down to the people that run it. Oh yeah, by the way, from Mr. York, I asked about the formula for a water line. There isn't a person in this building during the day that has any idea there's a formula for determining the cost of a water line.
Melissa Villanueva, 128 North Park Avenue.
Hello again. Melissa Villanueva, 128 West Park Avenue. First off, I want to thank the aldermen and the city officials for all your support and encouragement for Brew Point Coffee, as we venture to build up and build into the Elmhurst community. Our vision to create this cafe roasting site in North Elmhurst is much more than a business venture for us. For us, it is our way, our way of making a mark on the community. For many of you, you know that a little over two and a half years ago, I looked on Craigslist for an espresso machine, only to stumble upon this unique opportunity for a coffee shop in Elmhurst. It was this community that embraced us when we were just starting out, and because of that, it is this community that we want to commit as our home base. The reason why this is important, I'm going to do, to give you a little side story. Two of my entrepreneurial role models are Chip and Joanna Gaines from Fixer Upper, and I mention this because though they have grown to be a nationally recognized brand, they have been committed to revitalizing their home city. Waco, Texas is now a national destination, location, full of creative and flourishing small businesses. This is the type of entrepreneurial commitment we are looking to have. We see this not just as a request for financial assistance, but as a partnership to revitalize the North York corridor, and to continue our commitment to the city of Elmhurst. If our request passes, our plan is to begin finalizing the lease with the building owner, purchase the roaster, start the build-out. We're aiming for full roasting operations to start. It wasn't one day. Went down there four days in a row. It's a $250 fine, it's posted. It's also posted that it's for disabled, not for construction trucks. In fact, I went down there today, same malarkey. If you had an armored car, you could park in there if you're disabled. It's two and a half blocks from this city hall, and nobody cares. Why not? It's a federal law, there were no tags hanging out of mirrors, so it just goes on.
Mr. Pogash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
Sure I will, Mayor. I'll probably go down there tomorrow and see the same thing. Because this city doesn't care, from the administration right down to the people that run it. Oh yeah, by the way, from Mr. York, I asked about the formula for a water line. There isn't a person in this building during the day that has any idea there's a formula for determining the cost of a water line.
Melissa Villanueva, 128 North Park Avenue.
Hello again, Melissa Villanueva, 128 West Park Avenue. First off, I want to thank the aldermen and the city officials for all your support and encouragement for Brew Point Coffee, as we venture to build up and build into the Elmhurst community. Our vision to create this cafe roasting site in North Elmhurst is much more than a business venture for us. For us, it is our way of making a mark on the community. For many of you, you know that a little over two and a half years ago, I looked on Craigslist for an espresso machine, only to stumble upon this unique opportunity for a coffee shop in Elmhurst. It was this community that embraced us when we were just starting out. And because of that, it is this community that we want to commit as our home base. The reason why this is important, I'm going to give you a little side story. Two of my entrepreneurial role models are Chip and Joanna Gaines from Fixer Upper. And I mention this because though they have grown to be a nationally recognized brand, they have been committed to revitalizing their home city. Waco, Texas is now a national destination, location, full of creative and flourishing small businesses. This is the type of entrepreneurial commitment we are looking to have. We see this not just as a request for financial assistance, but as a partnership to revitalize the North York corridor, and to continue our commitment to the city of Elmhurst. If our request passes, our plan is to begin finalizing the lease with the building owner, purchase the roaster, start the build-out. We're aiming for full roasting operations to start in spring 2017, and we plan for the cafe to open soon after in summer of 2017. But I also want to be clear, if this report does not pass, due to financial constraints driven by zoning requirements, we will not be able to move forward with our venture. This space's zoning requires that in order to roast, it must include a cafe space as well. We were hoping to find alternative solutions for this, but the regulations are clear. The amount of money it takes to convert an industrial loading dock into a commercial space is beyond our current capabilities, and therefore, the city's TIF assistance is all the more important. Unfortunately, without the city's help, we will have to reevaluate our options and consider our other opportunities both inside and outside of Elmhurst. And I debated whether or not to share this, but to put all our cards out on the table, our Plan B is with North Central College in Naperville. Essentially, they have offered us a space to roast our coffee, and this is something that's been on the table for us for a little bit, but it's not Elmhurst. And this community is really special to us. We want to invest in this city, and we want to invest in this community, and we won't be able to do this without you. And all this to say, we worked hard to collaborate with the clawback at every single place that we could, just to make sure that this is something that made sense for both the city and the community. So thank you so much. So we want to keep our dedication to Elmhurst, and so we ask that with humility and sincerity, that if you can in good conscience, please partner with us to move Brew Point's proposal forward. Thank you.
Angelo Sepalvada, 128 West Park Avenue.
Hello, Angelo Sepalvada, 128 West Park Avenue, husband of Melissa and co-founder of Brew Point Coffee. First and foremost, thank you again for considering our report, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to go through it with you at multiple ventures at multiple times. It's actually been quite enlightening to see exactly all the work that you guys put into figuring out whether this will work for the city or not. Just to expand on what my wife said, yes, because of the zoning requirements of this particular building, we are in kind of a very specific stage where we are asking for assistance, because without it, the costs of converting it into a cafe and roasting space is outside of our current capacity. And so, we do come forward asking you this very humbly, but also, we just wanted to highlight, I'm going to be very frank as well, as my wife was, after opening Brew Point about six months in, we were considering, do we want to stay in Elmhurst long-term? Because we had moved here, we'd lived here, but it was new to us. And to be very frank, we were missing elements of living closer to the city, elements of diversity, and just things to do. And so we were considering opening another shop closer to the city, so that we would have the excuse to live closer to the city and between both shops. But we discovered, over the course of a couple months after that, that not only did Elmhurst really support us, but it fit us, and we were very encouraged by the way the community embraced us here. And so instead, we shifted gears, and we decided that our mission was we wanted to be community builders here. Instead of going and looking for a space that we felt fit us, we wanted to build a space that we believe in, and that we would like to give to the community of Elmhurst. And so, we're very excited about the practical aspects of this opportunity. It will be converting a completely unused loading dock in a commercial real estate, sorry, commercial building, into potential, excuse me, retail space that obviously we plan to use, as well as we would love to be one of the cornerstones of the North York Plan. That is our goal, and that is a bold goal, and it's a very bold statement, because obviously there's a lot of larger, more wealthy groups, businesses up there, that we are not at that scale. But our goal is to be a cornerstone in this community. Our goal is to be a community space that is owned by and defined by this community, and is welcoming to all. And so, we do appreciate all of the efforts that you guys have put in. We realize that this has been an atypical approach to the ways in which you've partnered with businesses before, and we, so regardless of whether we go forward with this or not, we do appreciate the time and effort and energy you poured into it, and your patience in looking at every single detail. And we just hope that you will see the value in it that we do, and we hope that we can move forward with this plan, and continue building into the city, and making it a space for everyone involved. So thank you very much, and good luck with the rest of the comments.
John R. Quigley, Elmhurst Chamber, 300A West Lake Street, Suite 201.
Good evening, I'm President and CEO of the Elmhurst Chamber of Commerce and Industry. For the past 20 years, our chamber has annually invited the mayor of Elmhurst to deliver a State of Our City address to the business community. And last Tuesday, Mayor Morley was kind enough to visit us at Community Bank of Elmhurst and deliver his fourth State of Our City address. We don't have air dates yet, but you can look for it on Elmhurst Our Kind of Town in February. It'll air on Channel 6 of Comcast, Channel 99 of AT&amp;T Universe, usually two times a week minimum, and it'll air through February, and once that gets done, we will be able to upload it to the chamber's YouTube page, and it will also get posted to elmhursttv.org, and people can view it there. One other item, aside from thanking Mayor Morley for coming out and speaking to us, is we posted a photo of the mayor promoting the fact that Crane's Chicago Business Magazine had earmarked Elmhurst as the second-best community in all of Chicagoland in which to purchase a home. And, Mr. Mayor, you have gone quasi-viral on our Facebook page. It has been viewed by more than 12,400 people, and you have set records for likes and shares. And just incidentally, our two previous photos were of DuPage County Chairman Dan Cronin and State Senator Chris Nibo, and, Mr. Mayor, you've blown them away. So once again, thank you, thank you for coming out and speaking to us, and we look forward to four more years of addresses from you.
Nicole, oh, excuse me, before Nicole, we have Michael Collins, 2276 Roger, Regency Wood Drive, Lyle. Sorry about that.
It's all good. Hi, my name is Michael Collins. I currently work with Brew Point Coffee. I am in charge of all of their finances, and I also do some barista work with them as well. And I really just wanted to talk about the community impact that Brew Point Coffee has here in Elmhurst and abroad as well. So whenever I was looking for a job, I came up to Brew Point really just wanting to find out as much about coffee as I possibly could. But ever since the first conversation I had with Melissa, it was all about the community. She started talking about how she worked with Elmhurst College in developing internships for accounting, and for social media, for marketing, internships for operations, and just plenty more like that. And she also talked about how she wanted to impact communities abroad that grew our coffee. So she wanted to directly impact people like farmers in the Philippines that were growing it, and she wanted to impact their communities, as well as the community here in Elmhurst. And so, right from that conversation, I knew that Brew Point was a little more than just a regular old coffee shop. It was really about building up a community and everything. And so, whenever we talk about, you know, we care about the community, and we want to build out the community, it's easy to throw those words around and sort of brag about them and whatnot, but really, Melissa empowers her employees every single day to come in and care about the community in the best way that we can. I mean, I never envisioned myself in charge of the finances for a company like Brew Point, and she's empowered me to do so. So whenever we support Brew Point, we're really supporting someone that actually knows how to impact the community. So thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. Yes, so, I'm the one who has the hoop house in my backyard, and I'd like to speak to it briefly. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I have submitted to you some paperwork, because there's more to say than I could possibly fit into three minutes. So forgive me if I just touch on highlights, you'll be able to look at the packet for background information, okay? So the way this whole thing has fallen out or unfolded is rather atypical, and I suspect if anyone had been involved in the process from the start with us in November 2015, you would agree. Again, I've documented this in the paperwork. For approximately a year, we worked with the city about the complaint from a neighbor, and it was told to us that the complaint is entirely aesthetic, that there was an issue with the appearance of it. And so, we worked with the city in code enforcement, and nothing was mentioned along the lines of any process or procedure that we needed to follow. It was told to us that as long as the hoop house is temporary, we were okay. And so, the hoop house is temporary, because it would kill everything during the summer. Of course, it's temporary, so we left it with that understanding in the spring, and we took it down, and we proceeded with no further consternation, or concern, or worry, or issue on our part. Again, no further instructions for additional procedures, permitting, et cetera, was required, recommended. The city cannot find in its records any communication from the city to us indicating a process, a procedure, a permit, a code, because none was discussed for the first year of this discussion. We have kept the paperwork. The neighbor who did not like the appearance of it complained again when we went to put the structure up again this fall, and only at that point did we go back to the city, and we were given the green light a second time. Now, at this point, I'd like you to know that perhaps, you don't know me, so you wouldn't know what type of person I am, but I have city employees who have contacted me, reached out to me recently, wanting to talk off the record, indicating that they know that what's going on here is not as it should, so, not as it should be. So, okay, the city then came up with some codes, which they say were in violation of. But it is our contention that a temporary hoop house for season extension is not properly falling under the umbrella of a mobile home code, nor is it properly falling under the umbrella of a permanent building code. I would stipulate easily that someone should probably not live in a tent in a Chicago climate, or any membrane structure of the sort. I would also stipulate that you probably shouldn't build a permanent building out of a membrane structure. These codes don't fit. So I would invite you to please work with me. Let's have this be a fulcrum point, where we can be an agent for change. We would love to draft a code that does fit, and in the meantime, don't penalize my family for doing something which there was no code for, which we were not given instruction for, that there is no, we followed to the letter, everything that every city employee asked us to do, we are functioning in good faith. We would just like to feel the same coming back from our city. And in terms of property values, which seems to be something that people are concerned about, I think Elmhurst would be greatly valued as a destination if word got out amongst the communities around us, that Elmhurst is a place where the city government is responsive to progress. Because codes that are not drafted to address a certain situation always need advancement, because technology advances faster than codes do. So let's be that kind of city, and let's have our property values go up for that reason. Thank you so much for your time. Please contact me if you have any questions about the information I've submitted in the packet.
Hi, good evening. Dan Virgil, along with my wife, designed and built the hoop house. I must say, you know, as we kind of started this a year and a half ago or so, and we first heard from the city, I was a bit surprised. It felt like we were trying to do kind of a, you know, doing a good thing. You know, our whole goal was to be able to grow, you know, local, organic, high-quality food for ourselves and our family. So, you know, it seemed surprising that you would run afoul of the city for trying to do that. You know, in talking with code enforcement when we first, you know, kind of started this last fall, you know, some of the alternatives or the suggestions that were given, you know, that would sort of, I guess, fit within the current codes, really don't make any sense, you know, to try to do what we're trying to do. I mean, we're avid gardeners, we try to grow a lot of the food that we eat. We want high-quality food for us and our kids. As part of that, you know, the growing season in Chicago, as you probably, you know, would surmise, is not really that long. You know, if you're lucky, you get May to September. So we're trying to extend that, to be able to have fresh food, vegetables, you know, a larger portion of the year. And that's where the hoop house comes in, you know, allows us to extend the season in the fall, start earlier in the spring, as well as, you know, winter over some vegetables as well. So, anyway, the suggestions that were given by code enforcement at the time were to build either a permanent greenhouse, which really doesn't make any sense. We use the same growing, garden beds for growing during the summer. A greenhouse would be far too hot during the summer. Even if you've tried to vent it, it still adds, you know, 10 degrees to the outdoor temperature. On a 90-degree day, it's, you know, really hot. We're also given the suggestion of just growing, or just building a, you know, a short cold frame, you know, to 12 inches tall to put over the top. Well, I don't know, you know, what kind of vegetables that, you know, you guys have seen growing. You know, we started out in the fall with, you know, four-foot-tall kale plants and tomatoes, and, you know, three-foot-tall chard, and other vegetables like that, so it just doesn't fit, you know. So if you look at the current codes, they just don't apply, don't work for, you know, trying to do this discarding activity on a year-round basis. What I would ask is to help support this activity, and let's come to some sort of common-sense agreement on what could be done, what makes sense, what can be supported here, to be able to support, I think, an activity that, you know, as you've probably heard from a number of people, believe is worthwhile and a good activity. Thank you.
Kathleen Sullivan. The thing I do like about the hoop houses is the part where they keep the ground intact, they don't pave it over, and it does absorb water. Of course, a day like today, it's been a very long day for those of us who are very, who follow stormwater management in Elmhurst. Between 1:00 and 2:30 this morning, there was a large downpour, the creek, Salt Creek went up to nine feet, which is high, that's kind of usually where we start to get worried, those of us who follow it. I had a river, I woke up to the fact that there had been a river in my backyard last night, as well as a lot of texts and phone calls from neighbors and people who were both in-town and out-of-town, across-town. So that's why, of course, I support today your discussions about Washington Street, stormwater tension, as well as the purchase of Golden Meadows, and want to remind you that it's, this kind of stuff is crazy on us all summer long, all spring long, but for this to be happening in January is just, I want you to know, we think about it all the time. Thanks.
Mayor, that's all who signed in for tonight.
Okay, that's it for public forum, for everybody who signed in. However, as we normally do, we also offer the opportunity for anybody who did not have an opportunity to sign in our sign-in sheet, if you wish to address the council at this time, we give you the opportunity to do so. But to give me a handle on it, I would ask if there is anybody, that you raise your hand and identify yourself, so I can see how many people we have. Is there anybody who wants to address the council at this time who did not sign up? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, I'm going to go from my left to right until we run out of hands. So on the left-hand side over here, my left, who raised your hand? All right, the gentleman here with the glasses on, right, who's got the zippy, we'll start with you. Please, same guidelines apply, make your way to the microphone, please identify yourself, and look forward to your comments.
My name is James Court at 153 North Hampshire. How many of you here are Cubs fans?
Mr. Court, Mr. Court.
It's going to pertain.
Oh, Mr. Court, please address your comments.
Okay, okay, okay. It's really about the concept of being the best you can be and about improving everything we do every step of the way. And one thing that I've seen that pertains to code enforcement is really failed to change what it's done, improve upon what it's done. It tends to be hostile, confrontational, inconsistent, reactive, and therefore very unfair. And I really think that the council should look into making code enforcement, and I believe in code enforcement, I think it's a wonderful thing, but improve the way it is done, implemented, and the whole process. That's enough.
Okay, I think the lady on the end there, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to talk...
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, my, my name is Linda McDonald.
Great.
Do I have to tell you where I live?
Nope.
Okay.
Optional.
I just wanted to talk about the hoop house. I am a neighbor from her. I pass it every day. If I hadn't heard about this, I really didn't even know it was there. I didn't recognize, I mean, you know, because it's not obvious to me. I find nothing whatsoever offensive about it. I can say that it is educational because I know that they do a lot of gardening, they teach their kids how to do the gardening, about money and selling the vegetables and what have you. And they're actually very, very good vegetables. It's also very eco-friendly. And, you know, if somebody thinks that that's objectionable, I don't know about these ice rings that are in the front yards of people's houses, that's, that looks worse than this hoop house, much worse. So, and it's kind of like the same thing. I really, I like the idea of it.
The ice rinks.
Missed it.
I didn't get it either.
Okay. Okay, anybody else on the left-hand side here who had their hand raised? All right, on the right-hand side, we'll go all the way in the back, the lady who's standing.
Hi, my name is Aileen O'Sullivan. Thank you for your time and for all of you for your service. I thought it was appropriate that you started your meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance for Liberty and Justice for All. I'm here in support of the hoop house. My parents came from Ireland, they were farmers, they taught their four children, their seven grandchildren, and now my father is teaching his seven great-grandchildren the art of farming and how important it is for us to be self-sustaining and take care of ourselves. I really can't understand how a city like, a village like Elmhurst would not be in support of something like this. I can't see that this hoop house is causing anybody any physical harm in the future or now. And to me, you know, that would be like the number-one problem. I've had neighbors who feed birds, who feed squirrels, that causes lots of problems. But I don't see how gardening is causing anyone any problem. And I really do hope each of you look inside yourselves and remind yourselves, you know, who are you serving? You're serving your community, you're serving your, you know, the overall good of the community. So, I really hope you consider that and you take this very seriously because there's people from all over, all villages, communities, that are watching what you're going to do with this hoop house. So, again, I do believe in common sense. I believe there's a lot of degrees flying around, but I'm hoping that all of you have a degree of common sense and you do the right thing for the community. Thank you.
Okay, lady in the back with the gold bracelet on or watch.
Hi, my name is Jessica Keck James. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I just want to bring up a couple of things about, in support of the hoop house, the benefits of gardening in our community. The gardening provides an educational opportunity for our youth that they are not getting in schools right now. And as a community, we have to fill in those gaps that the educational system is leaving open. It's something that we need to teach our children, it's something that is a skill that they will take with them to continue on. It's an opportunity to teach our children community policy. I think this whole thing will teach, will give them a great example of how a city functions, what happens when communities come together. And I, just lastly, the absence of the law does not make something illegal. So, just because it's not addressed does not mean that having a hoop house is wrong. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, lady who has her hand raised.
Hello, thank you. Jean Foster, I'm in 257 Elm Avenue, and thank you for letting me talk. This is totally unplanned and I don't like doing this thing, so... But I am in favor of the hoop house. I'm also a member of Elmhurst Garden Club. I also work with York Community High School, with their garden club. And I think that the hoop house should be allowed to continue. And what strikes me with this whole thing is the inconsistency in zoning enforcement and the inconsistency of the city wanting to do what they want to do when they want to do it, depending on who is in charge. We've had our own issues with certain of the city issues. We lived next to Mr. Junk for 25 years. He'd park his junk truck in front of our house during, when we had gourmet club for 25 years. It irked my husband no end. So, I understand whoever the person was that may have objected to it, but I have been there. I think what they're doing with teaching, I think the gal that talked just ahead of me, with, it is not being taught in our schools today to do sustainability and to focus on that, I think is just a wonderful thing. And I think you're going to be seeing more and more of it in the future and that it needs to be recognized that there's a lot, we need to use our space to work on doing food production and healthy foods, organic foods, that is, there's going to be a lot more of this in the future. So, I think you need to look at that and do wise and do judgment. And our backyards are our backyards. I've been there, I think it's very neat, I think it's very organized from what I've seen. And, you know, I would invite, I would share with her, go see it, go visit it yourself and talk to them because it's really very well-done. And she's teaching her children to work with it. It's a family function, it's a neighborhood function. And I think if you, you're missing the boat of what it's about and where our whole future is going if you don't take it upon yourselves to do with this what should be done. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Lady in the front, and then we'll go to the gentleman right behind you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Michelle Locanti, and I want to thank you for your time. I have been an Elmhurst resident for 20-plus years. I'm also a business owner in Elmhurst, so I take Elmhurst as a serious item. I'm also someone who believes in sustainability and that we continue to develop that, especially here in Elmhurst. I feel we're just a little bit behind, but hopefully we're moving towards that. About six years ago, we built a green home here in Elmhurst and we did have to build, work with the zoning and the planning people in the building to put in an open geothermal system, which is working well today still. So, thank you, city, for working with us on that. And I just want to also speak about the hoop house and say, again, that I support this and I think that all the eco-sustainable, sustainability community in Elmhurst supports this. I went out to see it myself so that I could speak with some authority about how it worked and how it looked. It is not unattractive, it is not very large, it's not very viewable from the surrounding properties. And it is growing vegetables today. There was only a little bit left, but they'll be able to start earlier and they've been able to produce longer, and that's a good thing. I mean, the more we can grow, the more we can do, the better we do for our community in sustainability and for our children as we move forward, the bigger the benefit. So, I would like you guys to consider allowing hoop houses in Elmhurst. I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Okay, sir?
Hello, my name is Tony Scolzetti. We live a few doors down from the Virgils. We are in support of the hoop house, my wife and I, Chris. She's not going to speak, so we'll save three minutes. If I could donate my three minutes, I would definitely give it to this lady up in front. She had a stack, she had, seemed like she had 100 good reasons of the environmental benefits of having a hoop house. So, obviously, it seems like there needs to be a lot of, a lot more worthwhile discussion on this. She did mention the word progressive. She had cases of other cities across America, said this progressive city, that progressive city. It would be nice to know that Elmhurst is a progressive city. So, I just wanted to say, thanks for your time and we are definitely in support of the hoop house. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who does not have an opportunity to speak? Last chance, please raise your hand if you'd like to address council. Seeing none, that concludes public forum for this evening. Onto agenda item six announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to announce that Public Works and Buildings will be meeting next Wednesday for our meeting, that is the 25th, so mark your calendars appropriately, starting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay. You know, we're going to take just a 30-second break. Certainly, you're not required to stay for the whole meeting, but if anybody wants to get up and leave now, we'll take a break in the meeting and, so you don't interrupt what they're saying up here, by all means. Mayor? Not you!
As long as you come back, you can't leave.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Our neighbor actually has code enforcement.
Quick!
Can't take rain?
No.
About our rain. I thought you were asking about our rain.
All right, wait a minute. We gotta, I will have to, no, go ahead, but elected officials, I can't lose a quorum One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Don't identify and cross the quorum, you're okay. Don't say anything.
You've got 12.
You mean you could, we could try?
You can go to the bathroom in twos.
And I, and I have this. I would just coerce him if he were to do one. He has the season, water, drink into his pool.
When is, um, when's Cassandra going to talk?
I'm like Chuck, you want the water? Sure.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Better I put the, put the hose into the parking floor. That's like, it's great.
It's great.
Oh, every...
He looks like the city council.
He too.
Okay, but...
I'm sissin'.
Whiskey?
Did you kill the...
There's a contract training.
And it's like, and it's like, and you can't, you open that door, you know, it's very peaty.
Right.
Huh?
Well, that's why it's like dirt. I mean, when they're really, whiskey that has to be, it's peaty.
Incorporated by reference, International Building.
Good to know.
And then we have amendments, and there's one word.
Whatever building it is, they're all here.
Twelve years it might have been.
It's like, hey, they're out there gabbing.
All right, let's go. Alderman Bram? Is Alderman Hanquist out there?
What you have to say is...
All right. We're going to get started.
You're making the exception, and you can't do that.
Come on, Mike. Let's go. Okay, we're going to get started.
That's not yours?
Where were we? Announcements? Any other announcements from the dais? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda at this time. Is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have removed to vote no or provide further comment? I don't see any. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda as listed. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner, Clerk Spencer.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy is absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Consent agenda in its entirety is approved. Onto agenda item eight, 8.1, a report, City of Elmhurst Strategic Communications Plan. I don't have a copy.
Oh, wait a second. One.
No, but I mean, is it a...
Something happened here.
What can Patty read?
It's a report.
Yeah.
One second.
There is a recommendation.
My computer's not working.
There is a recommendation.
There is one?
Yes.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to read the recommendation.
Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the city's strategic communications plan be approved by city council, signed by Chris Healy, chairman, Danny Palmsky, vice chairman, and Norm Leader.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommend, report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Palmsky, second by Alderman Leader. Alderman Palmsky?
Thank you, Mayor. Years ago, the city cut staff and, I'm sorry, the city cut staffed and associated responsibilities of communications and marketing. Most of the critical responsibilities were divided and handled by consultants and a part-time visitor and tourism staff person. We then aligned most of the responsibilities and added some of what had been missing under a newly hired communications manager. With the communications manager, we have seen an uptick in city messaging with a higher level of detail, branding, promotion, and a newly designed website. To define the course for these and additional communications efforts is the City of Elmhurst Strategic Communications Plan. The plan is far-reaching and detailed, covering the following: customer service, marketing, advertising, brand positioning, incident communications, direct mail and email, Elmhurst TV, messaging, public service announcements, citizen survey, internal communications, citizen engagement, printed materials, social media, use of social media during an event, public records and FOIA, creative services, and evaluation and measurement. Communications Manager Cassandra Schreff is here to present the plan.
Hello, city council members. What you have before you is the implementation plan for the city's strategic communications plan. The city's strategic communication plan was adopted on April 20th, 2015. City Council's adoption of the plan set the strategic direction the city would take in all communication efforts. Since its adoption, it was determined that the next step would be the development of an implementation plan that would bring the communications plan to life. The plan identifies the means in which the goals and objectives in the strategic communications plan will be executed. The plan will act as a guide for city officials and city staff to understand and support the communication efforts of the City of Elmhurst. There are five key areas in the communication plan identified. The first is the explanation of what communication tools are available to the city, describing how each tool is used when communicating to the city's stakeholders. The second is the city's branding guide. A branding guide is essential to any organization that works to develop consistency in communication materials. The city's branding guide identifies the approved usage of the city's logo, fonts, templates, and more. Creating visual consistency through approved communication materials will help to identify... Creating visual consistency through approved communication materials will help to identify official information from the city. The third area identified in this plan is the city's social media plan and policy, stating which social media channels are available to the city, and includes the strategy behind using each of these platforms. The fourth area is the city's incident communication plan, which outlines the roles, responsibilities, and protocols that will guide the city in promptly sharing information with stakeholders during an incident. And the fifth area of the communication plan identified is the city's media relations strategy, defining how the city can and will communicate effectively with members of the media. Communication efforts should be designed to meet the needs of identified target audiences. For the purposes of this plan, target audiences for the City of Elmhurst include: Elmhurst residents, Elmhurst businesses, city council, city employees, and members of the city's boards and commissions, commercial sector and residents outside of Elmhurst, tourists, news media, and community partners. The goals behind the plan include: reflecting the city's mission and core values in everyday interactions, communicating city news and information accurately, both internally and externally, in a timely proactive manner so that target audiences are well-informed; also encouraging and driving community participation, volunteerism, and mutual respect by implementing communication tools to aid in city planning processes; providing information before, during, and after an incident to effectively communicate with the community, community media, city council, and staff; utilizing communication platforms that best expand and improve public outreach, transparency, and access to information; and as with any plan, it is important to conduct ongoing measurement and evaluation. The city's strategic communication plan is a dynamic document. The city will use analytics from the city's website, social media pages, and other communication tools listed to guide ongoing development of goals and objectives that best serve all stakeholders. Communication trends and new forms of municipal communication will be analyzed, evaluated, and discussed on an ongoing basis and implemented wherever appropriate. It is important to note that without the support from elected officials and city staff, the implementation of this plan will not be possible. The city must work as a team to properly use and adhere to the methods of communication outlined in this plan. This plan has been presented to city staff directors and managers, and it will be my ongoing task to ensure that the plan is followed by city staff. Likewise, I ask you, city council members, to please help support the guidelines set in this plan to effectively implement the communication efforts of the City of Elmhurst. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions or highlights? Anyone? Alderman Levin?
Yeah, when I was, thank you for the presentation. When I was reading the materials, I was, there were two things that struck me. One, and you covered one of them tonight, you talked about residents outside of Elmhurst. I was wondering what that means, and it seems that one of the categories that was missing is we talk about the commercial side, the residents, the city, but we don't talk about, I feel like we should almost change out residents outside of Elmhurst, which I'm not sure what that means with, and maybe it's stakeholders, as you like to call it, but other organizations within Elmhurst, you know, a church, a club, a not-for-profit is not really listed here, but we talk about residents outside of Elmhurst. I wonder if you might comment on that?
I, I think residents outside of Elmhurst means anyone with potential interest in the city, and that could be people involved with not-for-profit organizations and who have some affiliation with the city, or may potentially be interested in the city at some time.
Okay, I, I understand that, but I think maybe we should consider putting in, because residents outside of Elmhurst doesn't really talk about the organizations that might be people with whom we need to communicate, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, or Elmhurst Symphony, or YMCA, or all the other organizations.
And, and that, those groups I would define as part of our community partners.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I think that wraps it up. Thank you for your time and your presentation. Alderman Palmsky, back to you.
I asked for the council's support in approving this. I think it's very well done, very thorough, and I'm excited that it's already been completed, so it's fantastic.
Additional comments or questions? Alderman Levin?
I just want to follow up. I mean, I think, I also think this is a, been something we've talked about for a long time. I'm very pleased to see it on a number of different levels. I mean, and to me in particular, the social media is something that we need to get our, I'd say our, our heads around, whatever the saying is, our arms around, and figure that out. I can tell you, we've had in the times when Mayor Morley had his first flood incident, and, you know, you're in the command center, and you're like, how do you get the word out? And it was almost a little bit embarrassing that we didn't know all the communicate, all the communication techniques that were available to figure out how to get people informed about what the city's doing and what's happening. So I, that's a key portion right there. The branding's important, so I'm very pleased to see this and thank the committee and communications director for their work.
Okay. Alderman Dunne?
Yeah, just general comment. I think that I want to commend our communications manager on the work that she and the rest of the staff did. I think they took a fairly general communications document that we had a year or so ago, and enhanced it greatly, made it something very actionable, answered a lot of questions on how and when, how and when to communicate, given, given all the different contingencies and scenarios that the city is confronted with. So I just am excited about it, and I'm glad to see such a quality document to guide our communications. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. This might be a question for the communications director. I'll let you decide. She and I had had a conversation at some point in the last few months about materials that will be available for the aldermen to use to try and maintain consistency, not just what the city directly is putting out, but also the materials that we might be using to communicate with residents in our ward. So I'm wondering if you could inform us of what might be available for us to use if we need to for communication.
Cassandra, can you find a live microphone over there?
So the templates that you see in the, the guide will be, are available for all city staff and elected officials.
Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, sorry.
And, and are they available to us, or are you kind of asking us to use those templates now?
It depends on which templates, I mean, the letterhead, the obvious templates are available for you to use, the presentation template, the flyers, brochures, business cards, those can all go through a creative service request, and elected officials are able to submit those as well.
Perfect. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I would ask clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunne.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy absent.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Before we move on, I just want to state a little bit of what, follow up on what Alderman Levin said. We did have an opportunity to be in an emergency situation while Alderman Levin was still mayor. And we didn't have this, and I, I think it's absolutely amazing. If you have an opportunity, it's on board docs, it's 45, 46 pages, something of that, and it's really a testament to city staff and Cassandra Schreff for all the hard work, but the, the presentation doesn't really do it justice. There is so much information almost on every page on how we communicate, and in this world where there's new types of communications almost every month, this is as close as we're going to get to current, and it's something, I know it's a living document, but it really is fantastic. There's a lot of information in here, and it's something that not only is necessary, but we owe to our residents, so I'll thank everyone for their hard work. Onto agenda item 8.2. It's a report out of Public Affairs. Let me see if I can... Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the 2017 Explore Elmhurst Express Trolley Program be approved by the city council, signed by Chris Healy, chairman, Danny Palmsky, vice chairman, Norm Leader.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a, a motion to approve the report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Palmsky, second by Alderman Leader. Alderman Palmsky?
Thank you, Mayor. During budget discussions, a motion to increase trolley funding was approved, and it was mentioned that there may be an addition of a second loop. The, because the budget process is not the forum for detailed discussion, P A and S, or Public Affairs and Safety, discussed this and the potential changes, taking into account feedback from trolley users, trolley riders, formal feedback that was gathered from them and from businesses that was reviewed by communications manager Cassandra Schreff. Additionally, the dedicated members of Elmhurst College Communications Capstone Course reviewed this and made some recommendations, too. Report on tonight's agenda addresses two main areas: the trolley operations and Explore Elmhurst marketing and communications. Last year, the city spent $97,000 on these two budget line items. I know that we keep talking about this as the trolley on its own, but because this report talks about trolley and Explore Elmhurst marketing, I'm going to compare it to those same items last year. There are some changes. We're not doing a rebrand of the website now, but I'm trying to make this more comparable. And tonight's report proposes those combined costs as $93,000, a reduction while serving more people. Though not all the details are in the report, the proposal for 2017 means getting more for less. Funding for the trolley as a tool to attract and encourage visitors and tourism along with city marketing are funded with hotel motel tax, or 4% of the dollars spent at hotels on rooms. It's city policy to direct half of this revenue toward tourism, and if we weren't a home rural community, state regulations would require us to follow this, not our own policies. The underlying premise is that investing in marketing of the city, particularly in the areas that attract visitors, will generate income not only to pay for that marketing and promotion, but result in food and beverage tax revenue and sales tax revenue. The benefits, businesses and their customer, this benefits businesses and customers, and the tax revenue generated helps fuel our investment back into the city. The bottom line is that the funds we're discussing are to be directed to promoting our community, and they cannot be used for police, fire protection, waste, water, or other city services. Last year, hotel motel tax revenue was $420,000. This report recommends allocating $57,000 on the trolley operating costs. This is a $17,000 increase from last year. The value in that $17,000 is found in enhancing the trolley service and capitalizing on the city's most popular events during peak times. One change is moving from 21 and a half hours on weekends to 24 hours. Sundays will be dropped, and the hours will change on Fridays and Saturdays from 12:00 P.M. to 12:00 A.M. This is due to the low ridership on Sundays and the interest to have earlier times on Fridays. Other changes supported by the $17,000 increase in operation are the events served. These include Art in the Park with 10,000 visitors, a second trolley, the evening of Rock the Block, which saw 16,000 visitors last year, and post St. Patrick's Day Parade, which attracts between 15,000 and 20,000 visitors. There will also be tours for hotel motel staff so they can direct visitors and plan for their shuttles to meet the trolley, and we understand that two hotels will have shuttles that will be able to join up to this loop. And though details need to be worked out, there may be a role for Elmhurst College orientation. The new events and extended hours give us more bang for our buck with a greater value than last year, drawing from bigger and more diverse audiences. From time to time, people ask me why the city doesn't host a signature event, and I think instead, investing the dollars in the trolley to showcase shopping, dining, museums, and library, especially when hosting events like those mentioned, as well as June Jazz at the college, the Historical Foundation's Craft Beer Fest, and the Elmhurst Cycling Classic better serves the community than one additional event may. As a bonus, we have learned that prospective businesses are enticed by the concept of a trolley drawing residents and visitors to their district and dropping them off right at their door. The trolley is literally and figuratively a vehicle for visitors and tourism. It is not intended to serve as a city-funded transportation mode to serve the purpose of the existing pace bus or the reduced fare taxi program available to seniors. And with the requirement to direct hotel motel tax revenue towards visitor and tourism, it is difficult to justify the inclusion of an area outside of the district's plan. The report notes that a $25,000 budget line allocated for Explore Elmhurst marketing is included. Last year, Explore Elmhurst marketing was $50,000. The proposed reduction largely reflects the fact that the website only needs maintenance, not rebranding. This includes 20 separate ads or promotions, materials, inserts in Chicago Tribune, and other publications. It also includes GPS tracking so riders can plan better, which is one of the pieces we gathered from feedback. Like last year, there will be an opportunity to generate some revenue on ad space, but this year, we're, we will be partnering with the chamber, increasing ad buys and the, the cost of them, and splitting the revenue with the chamber, and we expect the revenue to be approximately the same, around $3,600. The report speaks to $10,000 for an intern. The city currently has an intern position listed under an administrative budget line at 18, around $18,000. So this report recommends moving that over and reducing it to $10,000 for a communications and marketing intern to support the Explore Elmhurst campaign, including maintenance of Explore Elmhurst website, and this intern may also support other communications efforts in the strategic communications plan that we just learned about tonight. So I ask for your support in this Explore Elmhurst trolley and Explore Elmhurst marketing and communications report reflecting enhancement of the trolley, reduction in Explore Elmhurst marketing costs, and an increase in operation costs. So if, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, and I ask for your support.
Okay. Any comments or questions as it relates to this report? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Vice Chair Palmsky for the summary for the trolley program. I have a few points that I would like to make, and some of which I visited when we did talk about this briefly during the budget. During the budget, this was approved to add additional dollars for trolley service. I believe the trolley service is a good service and does promote Elmhurst businesses, but I also think that since the first year of doing the trolley service, it was mentioned by the committee that after that trial, or I forgot what the exact terminology was, but that trial year was done, that it would be looked at to expand the trolley service in regards to the size and where it reaches throughout Elmhurst. Even though that has been discussed more as a sideline discussion than anything of substance, in my opinion, as we see in what is presented today, is exactly this, the same modified drop-off points, but same relative circumference of the trolley route or loop compared to how it was first proposed, first day it was proposed. I asked the questions tonight that I asked before. Is this trolley for families, for seniors, for children, or everyone? I ask that question because as we continue the trolley service, we continue to modify the days and the hours. If, as stated in previous years, that this trolley service is for everyone, especially for families to be able to get to the various destinations throughout the City of Elmhurst, if that is the case, why are we dropping Sundays? I think our seniors would enjoy Sundays. I think some of the children and families would enjoy Sundays. I also ask, why do we continue to keep the hours if it really is for families, not, not only... I also ask, why do we continue to keep the hours if it really is for families, not only from what it was before last year, 6 to 11 at night on Fridays, and 12 to 11:30 at night on Saturdays? Not many young children stay up those late hours on both those days. But we're actually expanding to even getting later, to midnight on Friday and Saturday nights with no Sundays. So I do ask the question, is this really for families? It doesn't seem like it to me. It seems like this is changing more for maybe the adults than the families as a whole, which is fine, but we shouldn't wrap up the package and deliver it as this is a family affair, the trolley is a family affair, as has been stated on many a times when we discuss this. In regards to the route, or the loop, I reference again about the loop being discussed to expand. Once we do the first year, let's take a look and expand it to other areas of town. But what we have before us is the same circumference, not changing, not going north at all, and not going further south as it could, and probably, in my opinion, should be. I think that's a disservice to some of these business areas, the South York, the North York areas, you could even argue Lake Street as well. There are a lot of business areas that could utilize such a service. And I hate to see that we continue the same route over and over again for the trolley service. I already referenced the budget. The budget discussion, to me, we added these additional dollars, but we didn't add dollars in the budget for advanced life support. I think we need to really focus on what the priorities are here. Yes, I agree, they're two different funds, but with that said, what message does that send to the city of Elmhurst residents? It was just stated that the trolley service has increased food and beverage revenue, and this will further increase food and beverage revenue. It increases sales tax. That could be true, I think it's anecdotal, I haven't seen any data that really proves any of that. I think maybe that's the gut feeling and makes us feel like we're doing the right thing by making those statements. It was also just stated that this is now serving more people. I don't think it's serving more people, it's serving the same people more. And I say that over and over again, it's serving the same people more because we're not changing the route, we're not going north at all, we're not going further south. So we're saving the same old people since this trolley service has started, but we're giving that area, those individuals, more options. So we are saving, or serving someone more, but we're serving the same people more, not serving more people. I cannot support that for, I cannot support the trolley program for the various reasons that I've already stated. And really, the main concern I have in regards to this, it's serving the same people more and more, and we're not looking outside that circumference. And it's really becoming not only for families, but a midnight trolley isn't intended for serving families at all.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Dunn?
Just a few clarifications on the budget lines, or the expenditures that we're suggesting in here. I think I heard the trolley this year would cost $57,000. And I believe that I saw in some of the prep documents that we had about 12,000 riders this year, so we're looking at $4 to $5 per rider. So is that an accurate assessment? And do we have a sense for, with this expansion on the number of events that we'll support, and the modified hours, what type of ridership we'd expect this year, what type of increase?
Alderman Palmsky, first of all, the first half of his comment was, really, are the numbers correct? The question is, the second question I would summarize is, is there any projection of increased ridership?
Thank you, Mayor. The numbers are correct. It's my understanding that it was approximately in 2015, $4 per ride, 2016, $3 per ride. And with the interest in selecting the most populated events and having more opportunity for more people to ride, that it would be less than that. So, and additionally, there were much fewer riders on Sundays, so there just, it just was not well utilized. So by moving it to different times that everyone can use, starting at noon, and through, so accommodating anybody who wants to be out and about during the day, as well as people later at night, the expectation would be more riders and less cost per ride.
Okay, any other comments? Dean Nann, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Healy, absent.
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Honquist?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Zapatino?
Aye.
12 ayes, 1 nays, 1 absent.
All ayes, 1 nay. Motion carries. Agenda item 8.2 is approved. On to Agenda Item 8.3, and ask Clerk Spencer to read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve a lesser amount of $60,000 to contribute to the facade and build out the property at 163-601 North York to include, 563, thank you, City Manager, -601 North York, to include clawback, payback provisions with an additional city commitment to close the curb cut estimated at $15,000. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval, signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman, and Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chairman, unsigned by Michael Honquist.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a TIF request that's probably going to take some thought, it's a little bit unusual compared to TIF proposals that you've seen in prior years over the council. And part of the reason, I guess it's severalfold. One is that there has not been a formal TIF application award program set up for TIF 4. It's a relatively new TIF program, TIF area. I think there will be, I would guess, that there would be some sort of program to make that TIF work in the future, but it's not there yet. Secondly, when I think of TIF programs that we've seen, we think of Han Street, we think of LA Fitness, we think of Mariano's that are fairly large in scope. This is a rather modest proposal, and I think we have to look at it for what it does do and what it doesn't do. This, in my opinion, and the reason I support it, is that it fits nicely into the North York Street plan. We are trying to get a critical mass of development to get York Street developed. We've got the LA Fitness, we've got the Mariano's, and this is across the street. We have a situation where there's a loading dock on a commercial space that doesn't really fit there. And as we've analyzed this particular request, the city staff and the committee looked at it as the loading dock component at 15,000 is something that we would want to do to get that curb cut out anyway. The building owner has said that he would agree to take the loading dock out and the curb cut for this program, but if this business doesn't go in, he'd want to leave it there to see if the next prospective tenant would want to use those facilities. We also considered what kind of assistance would be available if this project were in TIF 1, and we note that there would be qualification for $50,000 in facade, and life safety upgrades, and a $10,000 retail grant. So, you know, I heard, they're a very enthusiastic bunch, as I'm sure you've heard from the presentation last meeting where we discussed, and tonight. And to me, it's not about enthusiasm, and I think the people who sign the majority report struggled a bit because we're not in the business of offering financing for businesses. But we felt that this is a, the kind of business, the roasting business, the, what it brings to the community, the community participation that would be involved, and what it would do for that location, that we would want to incent that on a small scale to bring it as another anchor at the south end of North York Street. When we were last before the committee, a number, and I think two or three of the aldermen questioned, well, what is the clawback? They would be a higher comfort level to consider this with that information here. And we've added that into the report, and there are three different ways that the money could be clawed back. One is if there's sales above 750, sorry, above 750,000, there would be a 2% return to the city of those amounts, and 3% above a million. If the business was sold within five years for above $500,000, any dollars in excess of that would be returned to the city. Or if the city, if the business moved out and it's kind of scaled back, there'd be a payback to make sure that we are, as we do in other situations, buy some loyalty to the city, although I'm not sure that's going to be a critical component here. So it takes some thought. I wasn't 100% for it when we started out. We've spent a good amount of time on it, and I think it's been fleshed out into a program that we can look at and consider, and I am going to ask for your positive consideration of the majority report.
Alderman Honquist?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to replace the majority report with minority report, so we can discuss.
Okay. As I often do in these types of situations, there's so much overlap between minority and minority that all comments relating to this will be considered appropriate. So we have a motion to substitute the minority for the majority. To continue conversation, I'll need a second. We have a second. Okay, we now have a motion before us to substitute the minority for the majority. We heard the majority report, I think it's synopsis. Alderman Honquist, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So to start quickly, I'd like to remind everyone of my story here on the City Council. So three and a half years ago, when I started, the two large projects we had before us were Han Street, now Elmhurst 255, and also the parking garage. And at the time, there was some consternation by some that we were doing too much or going too far in what we were doing with those projects. I think, looking at the city today, we can all agree that those are very successful projects, even in the state that they're in now, and that there is a, literally, almost, I'll use my term, boon, going on in town when it comes to commercial real estate and residential real estate throughout town. A few quick examples, most of York, from the Plaist Building down, has been purchased without TIFs. The parking lot across from the parking garage was purchased from us for over 1.7 million, we have FCC going in there. We have Opus One looking at property down the street to redevelop that. We have the North York area that is fastly being redeveloped, as we've discussed. And just in the last few weeks, if you all will recall, we approved a $3 million project on North York without TIF assistance for a car wash, just as a few examples. So there's clearly a lot of development going on in town. When this came before us, the price tag to me was a little high, this being the Brute Point. And so I stopped and I started to think, how does this fit in? And it led me to the policy discussion that Chairman York meant, or Chairman York, Chairman Levin, you are, Chairman Levin, mentioned, which is the facade program and the retail grant. And as we all should know, either the facade program or the retail grant is in place in TIF 4, TIF 5 today, and therefore, would need us to consider that and decide from a policy perspective if that's something we'd like to do or not do going forward. As a point to my thinking, as I outline this for you, I would, I am no longer in support of facade program in the city at all. So for me to go forward and to approve a project like this and say, I think the facade program is logically an extension of TIF 1 to TIF 4, for me, that doesn't work. And it doesn't work because I think we've moved beyond, to my earlier statements, what the facade program was put in place for decades ago, which was to help remodel and upgrade older buildings. And when we had the program, it was very successful over the years to help do that, and incent building owners that otherwise may not be incented to do something to improve their property. They could simply sit on the rent, and we have the problem of dilapidated buildings or overlooking buildings. So in that, in that sense, it was successful. That was for the Central Business District in TIF 1. This is TIF 4. I don't know that the facade program, even if we all agree that it's still a strong program, is appropriate for TIF 4. So as I went through the policy thought process of, does this make sense, putting Brute Point aside for a minute, does this make sense for us to support as a city, the answer I came to was no. So that is from a policy perspective. The second point that I wanted to make leads to the project itself. Now, as far as Brute Point, Melissa, I spent some time talking to her, she's a great person, they're running a great business in town, they should be applauded for that. I have no problem with that whatsoever. If I could get beyond the policy issue, which, as I've explained myself, I can't, but if I could, if we had another policy in place, say a small business grant program, because we wanted to support businesses like this in this scenario, they'd be first in line, and I'd support it in a minute. But we don't, and I think that's an important distinction. So now I have to move forward to this project and look at it as it stands by itself. And the problem I had with this project, as before mentioned, it came in a little high, which made me stop and think through a lot of this. And then, second, I started looking at, all right, so what's the return for the taxpayer? It should be noted that the building owner did not show up to committee meetings. I've had conversations prior with both city staff and with Brute Point, that that would probably be a good idea. Because I'd like to understand if we're going to invest money into a building, this is only one section of a building, for those of you that don't understand this, what's his plan for the greater building? Say Brute Point fails. We did a clawback, but clawback to me is not much of a concern. If they go in and they're successful, we won't have to talk about a clawback. If they're unsuccessful, and they fail for whatever reason, then what's left there? New space that could potentially be leased out again, that's true. It also could move forward, we could have the building owner and another business come in and say, I want to do something business with this whole, something different with this whole space. So I'm not getting an owner that's sitting there saying, here's my plan for the building of what I want to do. To my before-mentioned comments, because of the mindset I'm in now with what we're doing in the city, I think, and maybe in the near future, but definitely within a reasonable timeframe, we could have a developer come in and look at that space, which personally I would prefer, given the way and shape of that building and what's there now, to everything else that's going on in North York. I don't have that right now to talk about, but it's a definite possibility. And I'd rather think bigger that way for these types of projects, similar to what was mentioned before. If the TIF's in place, and it's there to help redevelop an area, I'd like to see the area redeveloped. I mentioned to Melissa when I talked to her, I'd be happy if they came in and wanted to buy the whole building, they're not there yet, right? And then develop it and redo the whole facade. That I could get behind, something with a plan that went beyond just the one space. So that's what led to my thinking on this, and why I don't support it. Because aside from the fact of the policy issue and the business going or not going, what this ends up ultimately being from us is a grant. It's a business grant. And I get very uncomfortable with us just picking the winners and losers and saying, well, we're going to grant money to this firm. What's, if the next company comes in and wants to go right next door to them, which is a possibility, are we going to grant them $60,000? What's our criteria, to say no? So I believe in doing this tonight, if you support it, we are setting a precedent for TIF 4. By extension, you could probably argue TIF 5, they're similar. But even if you don't go that far, for TIF 4, we are setting a precedent in policy. Whether or not we all agree to that policy or not, that's what we're doing. Whether or not we all agree to that policy or not, that's what we're doing. I'd be more comfortable addressing this from a policy perspective and then deciding, you know, that Brew Point is a good candidate or not a good candidate. Again, if, if I wasn't in this seat and I was thinking differently, even as an investor, I might want to put $50,000 in their business. But if I did, I wouldn't be doing it at no interest, and I wouldn't be doing it for no equity. And it's kind of what we're doing. So those are the reasons I don't support this, and I ask for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, additional comments? Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think every time that we commit city resources to a project, we need to be able to identify what we get in return. I appreciate the analysis, review, scrutiny assigned to this project, and I hope we continue to be as diligent in evaluating future requests for city assistance. I strongly support the recommendation of the majority report. First and foremost, the return to the city is increased sales tax revenue, enough to repay the amount of assistance in as little as five years, based on projected sales from the new location. The majority report recommendation is consistent with the North York Plan, which, which suggests a facade program to encourage projects that contribute to the revitalization in character of the area. The plan also suggests the city consider a restaurant assistance program and a commercial loan gap financing program. I think the package of assistance recommended for Brew Point touches on aspects of all three suggested programs. It would be premature to create any one of these programs until the TIF is generating a more robust increment, but worthwhile projects that surface in the meantime merit consideration. This project will invest in real property improvements to a space that has never generated any sales tax revenue. Once the investments, which include ADA bathrooms, garage doors, electrical and plumbing upgrades required for a cafe space, once these are made, it's likely the space will be productive in the future, regardless of the occupant. Lastly, you know, I want to acknowledge staff and the committee in their work on creatively coming up with the recapture provision. I think this recapture provision gives the city an opportunity to benefit in the case of strong success, which I genuinely hope is realized in this case. Thank you.
Alderman Leiter?
A TIF, in order to grow and succeed, should be a mixture of venues and ventures, which together will create a synergy of success. The coming together of different enterprises, which will create a result that is greater than the sum of their individual effects or capabilities. I think Brew Point should be seen as part of the emerging North York TIF as a whole, and certainly anything that furthers the success of that TIF will be beneficial to the second and third wards, both of which are bounded by the new TIF along York. And in that sense, beneficial to Elmhurst as a whole, I support the majority report.
Any additional comments? Alderman Toledo?
A question, actually, for the author of the majority report. Was there any discussion on, yeah, I, I read through all of the different scenarios and the clawback proposal, and the one that wasn't addressed, and I, I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to understand if it was discussed at all at committee, what is the taxpayer recourse within the clawback discussion if the business that's applying for the TIF assistance fails? For example, did you discuss the property owner itself being on the hook to repay the taxpayer for any of the improvements to the building? Thank you.
Alderman Levin?
We talked, I don't know if it was talked about at the committee level or staff level, but there was conversation about business failure and what's paid back, and the investment already has a significant component of borrowing from the applicant. So there's three pieces of financing. There's the building owner contribution, there's the applicant, and there's the TIF request, and I think that the applicant is already going as deep as they can go into this project. We did not talk to the building owner at any time about any participation beyond what it was, whoever the owner is, is putting into the request that's identified in here.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Alderman Dunn, and I'll go to Alderman York.
Yeah, I also have a few questions for the author of the majority report. So looking at the, the first element of the clawback slash payback would be more of a payback function, percentage of sales, 2% above $750,000 and 3% above a million. How long will that go on for? I'm not seeing that. The other two bullet points, which are, the second and third, are more of a clawback clause in, in the committee's report.
They're five years each, it should have been.
Okay, so for the first five years, that would be in effect, okay. My second question is, the applicant in public comment tonight and before has stated there was a serious hindrance in their efforts, in their efforts due to our onerous zoning requirements. Can you let, can you explain what those are that are creating a hardship and increased cost for this project? And can we, can we evaluate a variance to those to alleviate some of that cost? Which we've done in, the car wash has been mentioned, there were variance created in that effort to reduce some of the costs of that effort.
Alderman Levin?
You know, I am not sure why the applicant portrayed it as it was portrayed tonight, because what, I, I saw it as more of an answer, because we had asked the question of committee about, well, isn't this just another coffee shop? And it was portrayed and presented, I should say, more of this roasting concept that required to do that, what was required to do that was also to have the cafe portion available. So I don't know if it was a hindrance, I think it's part of the total package they were presenting, and I'm not sure that it's something that we wouldn't want, because that's part of the sales tax generation component of the project. So I, I heard what they said, but that's not the way it was discussed at committee.
Was there any specific requests for variances to our zoning codes to make this a more palatable project for them?
Well, no, there wasn't, and as Alderman Mulliner was pointing out, to do this project, they would be zoning compliant with what they're proposing to do.
Alderman York, then I'll go to Alderman Mulliner.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question also for the majority report writers. So if I, now I'm understanding, I didn't understand this from reading this, but the first point, percentage of sales, so starting on day one, when they start producing sales up there, they're going to be giving back, whether the success, in their success, they're going to be actually paying back the city out of sales tax. Because that's, I always think of a clawback as, if it all goes to heck in a handbasket, how do we get our money back? This is, for lack of a better word, kind of a loan, I don't want to call it a scheme, a loan setup. Am I understanding that right? Because I didn't get that until we started having discussions tonight.
I think that's, well, yes, I wouldn't call it a scheme. I would call it a component of, of the clawback or payback, as it says up here, so we have two different terms. That's part of the payback. Will they hit $750,000 in year one, two, three? I don't know. They, they have portrayed a very positive business plan, and if it's there, then it is a payback, yes. And it's a different way of looking at it, but it's something that we asked for and they agreed to.
Okay. So I have some, just some comments. So obviously, there's a lot of people who love this business. It's in, kind of in my neighborhood, I frequent it too. It's beneficial to the community and to the college and everything we've heard. It's all, that's all wonderful. I heard the word atypical tonight from one of the owners of the business, and I heard the word atypical in another discussion we had, so that's like two times, the first two times I've heard the word atypical, and they've both been in one meeting. This is a very atypical, atypical thing.
Three.
Okay, thank you. You know, TIF incentives are different than this. This I consider more of a sales tax type of an incentive. That's how, how it kind of seems to me, because TIF incentives generally are predicated on the fact that there's going to be some increment generated, and I'm not saying there's not, but it's not going to be any substantial amount of increment created from the redevelopment of the property or anything like that. So I think this, in my mind, kind of goes more towards a sales tax incentive. My problems with it are more along the lines of Alderman Honquist, and then it's, it's a policy issue. First of all, it's, we, we rarely ever, in fact, I don't want to say never, that's never a good word to say, we rarely ever go out and, and, and award somebody the money ahead of time. It's usually a kind of a pay-as-you-go arrangement. So that's, and, you know, pretty much entirely different than a lot of things that we've done. But I think more troubling than that is, I think, what Alderman Honquist brings up, and that's the fact that this is a great request and a great company and great people, but what happens when, when we get another request from somebody who isn't so great or doesn't have such great people and things like that? What are, what are going to be the criteria that we use to say, maybe not, or let's, let's think about it a little bit differently? So while I'm very excited about Brew Point being here and possibly expanding, I do have concerns with the method, the way we're doing it. I think we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit on this one. I certainly think that we could look at some best practices and some newer TIF areas and devise some programs that are different than facade programs and look at some sales tax incentive-based types of things, but I think we're venturing into a very dangerous, we're putting ourselves in a very difficult spot. We've had some other people up in this area come to us and request monies before, and we've, pretty much, they haven't been able to meet the TIF incentive requirements, and it went nowhere. And I think we're just, you know, kind of getting a little bit outside of the boundary lines here, and that does concern me.
Alderman Mulliner?
Just a couple of things. First off, I want to, I want to make sure that everybody's clear on one thing, that the owner made a comment about the fact that part of their business would not be allowed up in that area if it wasn't for the way that this, this is set up, and I just want to make it clear that the roasting component, if they were not selling coffee up there, would not be allowed in that zoning district. Because they're going to be, have a cafe in the front of it, they would be allowed to, so that kind of answers your question as far as what the question on that was. It's not necessarily a variance, it's just the way that the, our zoning code is written in that particular area. The other thing that I want to make, that I just want to kind of take a step back on is, this is one of those situations where, yeah, we're a little bit ahead of the curve as it relates to what we're doing in that TIF. Our grant programs in downtown are TIF-related. Our facade grant program is all TIF-related. The retail grant is one that's not particularly TIF-related, but this is one of those things where I believe that we have an opportunity to open the door, begin the process of improving that TIF district that's up there. We have a great opportunity for a business to expand within the city of Elmhurst. I think it's going to draw people to the uptown area, the North York area. I think what it's going to do in addition to that is, it's going to help that developer to take that building and actually make it a better use than it currently is. He's already made some tremendous improvements in the last year by putting in the Goldfish Swimming Place, which I still haven't quite figured out how you put in a swimming place there, but he did, or they're in the process of doing that, and the dance studio has expanded. We've got a number of other facilities that are going into that, and I believe that if people get up there and they begin to see something such as a coffee shop, a roasting facility, and places like that, they're going to see other opportunities that are up in that north end. And one of our responsibilities is to expose the public and expose other businesses to that area, and this is a perfect opportunity, because it not only is going to be exposing our individuals who go up there to, to buy coffee from the Brew Point Cafe, but it's also going to be bringing in people who want to roast from other communities to see what we have to offer in the north end, which gives us other opportunities to exploit, if you will, that TIF district. So I full, wholeheartedly support this program, and I hope everybody else can come on board and support it as well.
Anyone else having that opportunity to speak? Alderman Bram, then I'll go to Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you. I share some of the same concerns as have already been mentioned, but one of the other things that I've, I've taken a look at, and I'm not sure I have a good handle on at this time, is exactly what is needed. What is the dollar amount? What is that magic number to make sure we, that Brew Point could move forward? And the reason why I mention that is, the initial request by the applicant was for $100,000. Then I look at the TIF application that was filled out, the TIF assistant application, it was $95,000. Then what we have before us today, and the applicant is still wanting to move forward from 100 to 95, and they're still wanting to move forward at $75,000. So I'm just wondering to myself, what is that magic number? Well, $100,000 wasn't the magic number, even though that was the initial request. $95,000 wasn't the magic number, even though that was one of the requests. Now, maybe it's not the applicant's request, but the committee is recommending, and I'm assuming they're doing so with the knowledge of the applicant, that $75,000, or $60,000 plus the driveway repairs, if you will, or sealing up the driveway for an additional $15,000 would allow the applicant to move forward with this development. I'm just not sure, by looking at this and hearing conversation and reading the material online, on, you know, is this enough? Or is this too much, even a better question, of a TIF incentive? I personally think that the dollar amount is too high. I, I don't buy the argument of, well, if we had a facade program, or if we had X that we have in TIF one, if we had it here in TIF four, then they would be allowed for this many dollars. Well, we don't. We don't have those programs here. We only have it in TIF one. So you can't apply that logic as if, if you have something when you don't. But we do have a TIF incentive policy, and I'm assuming that this has been really vetted from the TIF incentive policy in order to allow this to move forward on that criteria. So I have some concerns of the majority report basing, at least in part, the argument of, if they, if we had a facade program, or if we had a retail grant program, they should, the argument, in my opinion, should be, well, it is applicable to the TIF assistant program that we have to date. So I'm a little bit concerned over that. The other concern, as I think Alderman Honquist already made mention, is a slippery slope here. This is a decision that, you know, we're setting a precedent if we do move forward. Alderman Mulliner just mentioned Goldfish Swimming School, I think that's the name, which would be, if this moves forward, right next door or relatively close. They're digging out the building to add a swimming pool. I think their investment is huge, and last time we talked about this, I think I brought it up then, too. They have not, at least to date, requested any dollars. So how do I look at, and this applicant, Brew Point, and say, they should get what I believe to be a steep amount of about one-fifth, a little bit over 20% of the required build out, when right next door, they're investing, I speculate, just as much if not more. And Alderman Honquist already mentioned, the car wash that went, or moved forward the other day, they as well. other day, they as well, significant dollars, and the difference there is they're owning the property, but they have not requested for TIF funds as well. Some of the other arguments in here are in regards to what Brew Point is currently doing at 124 West Park. It says that it averages, the report says that it averages 330 customers per day and a, and $1,600 per day in revenue. Well, if I do the math, 1,600 in an average of 30 days in a month, that's $48,000 in a month, times that by 12 months in a year, that's $576,000 a year. Well, even though it's nice then to have in the majority report that anything above $750,000 in retail sales will get 2%, and above a million will get 3%, but by the own admission in the report, it states that it's reaching, the current location is reaching $576,000 per year, again, if my calculations are correct. So it looks nice on paper, but I don't see the City of Elmhurst residents getting anything back, at least from the sales tax provision in the majority report. I do think Brew Point offers a lot to the community. I don't drink coffee, no offense, so I have not gone to the Oneon Park, but just from the passion of the people who have spoken tonight and previous nights, it definitely seems that it's more than just a coffee shop. And that's a lot of kudos to the owners as well as the staff there, but I can't base a decision on just that. It's not just about the passion. It's also about the precedence that we may or may not be setting, and what is wise dollar spent from a City of Elmhurst taxpayer perspective? To make a request of at least where it stands today, of approximately one-fifth of the total build-out cost, and the way I see it, not seeing any dollars, at least initially, and it's only a five-year provision, provision, of giving any of those dollars back, is something that's worrisome to me. I, I don't think that it should be zero, but I definitely don't feel that the current request of, or the current report of $60,000 plus $15,000 for the driveway, I think that's in excess as well. I am a representative from this side, I live within blocks of this proposed location, I would love to see it developed. I do have concerns over the location. We're talking closing one more driveway, which you have traffic coming from the front, coming from the back, and now you only have one ingress egress, and making this loading dock to be something that's more of a destination, there's no sidewalks, so that's from the development side. But from the TIF incentive side, I think the majority report is, is too rich for my liking. The last thing I'll say is, we had a hot dog business in here. I don't think they ever filled out a TIF application, but Alderman York already mentioned, other businesses have made requests, and they got to the vetting stage, from my understanding, but haven't made it to this point. So really, what we've done in the past, our precedent has been when there's been ownership of a building, when there's a large investment to really move forward with a TIF incentive, but especially at this magnitude of one-fifth of the current build-out costs, it's just too rich for my blood.
Alderman Palmsky.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I have a question and then a couple of comments. The question is, it was mentioned a couple of times about owner of a building versus the business owner, and I just was, wanted to know if there's any more information on being a qualified applicant, it doesn't matter if you are the business owner or the property owner? I know we don't have a policy set up for North York TIF, but for other requests.
No, I can answer that, it doesn't, it's, it's the owner of the business, not the owner of the building, that can apply.
Okay, thank you. I would agree with everyone who said it doesn't really make sense to cite the facade program or retail grant program in TIF 1, but we have assisted other businesses in the North York TIF, and I think it's reasonable for us to continue to do so when appropriate, and I do look forward to the creation of some policies and programs so that we can be more consistent. When I look at this request, I take into consideration the property and the building itself. This building is designed to accommodate and house more industrial uses, so before it had the current zoning as commercial, it was a different type of commercial that had more industrial-type uses. So the way I see it, Brew Point is requesting assistance to renovate it in a way that not only assists their business model, but should they leave, it would be better positioned to attract a tenant who's able to operate in a commercial district. So with loading docks that, that would attract more industrial uses, which it's not an industrial Additionally, there is some mention of, well, maybe this is a slippery slope, are we setting precedent? But I think if a business comes forward, even without any programs in North York, if a business comes forward and asks for city assistance to consolidate or reconfigure curb cuts, I think those have provided, provided there's funding and, you know, additional information, those could be very reasonable funding requests, very appropriate for us to fund. That is one of the main points in the North York Plan. Additionally, if other businesses come forward asking to renovate a building, or assistance renovating or reconfiguring a building that makes it more compatible, not only with the North York Plan, but with the zoning code, I think that those need additional, a second look too. So I don't see this as if, when businesses come forward, should we support them because it's happened once? I think everyone needs to be evaluated on its own. Again, I hope we have some programs in place soon, but I do think this is, it would be a benefit to the area, and I wish Brew Point great success if they end up not sticking around as long as they anticipated, or if there's some changes, I do think we're better positioning that area to meet the North York Plan.
Any additional comments? Anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak yet? Alderman Wagner.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a little issue with the, not, well, this is not going to sound right. The building owner himself is a, is a major cog in this wheel here, it seems. There's three different financing arms. There's a building owner of 130,000, Brew Point themselves are throwing in 200,000, and the city, they're looking for 75 grand, which the majority report says 60. We're a, we're a small little portion of this overall, if this passes, if the majority report passes, and I don't know quite yet if I support it or not. I thought Alderman Honquist's argument to not support it was very effective. And I come back to the building owner, and do we have any kind of agreement with the building owner? Does Brew Point have an agreement with the building owner? Let's say this passes and they are able to get their $60,000 loan finance, TIF grant, whatever you want to call it, but the building owner takes six months to actually come through on his end. We have plenty of time to pass a facade program in the TIF 4, within that time to make this, to take the policy argument away. I'm just curious. I, I didn't attend any of the committee meetings, I see the reports are signed, so maybe that's a question for the chairman, Mr. Mayor.
Oliver Levin, you wanted to speak anyway. Any, any additional information you can add about the owner of the building?
Well, let me answer that question first. My understanding is that the lease is actually contingent upon this grant, so the, I mean, they're going to have to be built together. If we give this assistance, it will be contingent the other way, that the building owner has to put in what they're going to do, so they have to go together, or it doesn't work. More generally, I just wanted to throw out a couple observations or comments that, from the feedback I've heard. We do offer assistance to businesses that don't own the building. Red Arrow Tap does not own the building, and they're getting assistance. Ace Hardware was one that I had a very difficult time supporting, because that's one where I thought they didn't really need our money to make Ace Hardware on First Street a better property. They were well situated to do it themselves, and, and actually, I didn't support that one. FFC, I would say, is a kind of creative project that we did a different way. We didn't, it's a, it's an atypical project, you might say. We did a mini RFP, and they are getting assistance, although we're selling it, they're getting relocation of utilities and some environmental cleanup. Opus is another great project, but they too will have their TIF requests before our, my committee, our committee, and then before the council, probably at the next meeting. So there's a number of ones that were cited, which have some assistance that are going to be coming, they're, they're not necessarily building owners. The car wash, in my opinion, they were asking for so much in terms of zoning that if they asked for some money too, they might have lost it all. Plas and the Goldfish people didn't ask for it, you know, some do, some don't. Maybe the Plas developer didn't feel like he needed it, or didn't want to go through the process, and I think that could be part of it. But when I look at what we're doing at this project, you know, we are taking out a loading dock, it's not just a curb cut, and a, and a curb cut and a loading dock, which the landlord might otherwise not do. In fact, we were told that the landlord said, "I'd do it for this business, but otherwise I'd rather leave it in there, because the next prospective tenant may say, 'I'd rather leave this as a commercial space, it's right off the highway, so I'll leave that loading dock, I'll leave that curb cut.'" It's, you know, in terms of the question that Alderman Bram raised, the committee felt that the $100,000 request was a little rich for what was being done, and as often happens, there were communications through staff that I participated in indirectly, and I said, "Please ask the applicant to hone this request down to just the bare minimum of what they need to make this project go," because I felt there would be concerns for such a large request. And I think the applicant expressed to staff and to me personally, you know, "If we say this is the bottom, are you going to cut us more?" I say, "Well, sometimes we have to be honest with each other, because if we're going to make this happen, you've got to be honest with us, and we've got to be honest with you." So I feel that is the bottom line. It's not 75, it's 60 and a curb cut. I don't think it's 25 or 20%. When I calculate it, depending on whether you put the curb cut in, it's 15 or 18% of the total project they're asking for us, but I don't have a math business, so.
That's bullshit.
Yeah, okay, so we, it's atypical. I mean, I think that's, it's, it's, it's a good way to describe it. It's an opportunity for the city, and I look at it, I struggle with it at first too, because I don't want to be in the business of making loans to businesses. We will need a policy. We don't have the policy yet, but we're faced with an opportunity. We can make something happen there that I think will be good for, not, I mean, I like they're nice people, and I hope it's good for them, but I'm trying to do something that's good for North York, and I think this will help expand and anchor, turn that property around there, and make it go forward. Next one comes along, I probably struggle with these more than most people. I may or may not be in favor of it, but this one seems like a project that can do good for the city, do good for the area, and I hope you, and I guess I'll say, vote no on the minority report, because that's essentially going to, well, I shouldn't say that, but if that's what we're talking about, be no on the minority report, and I ask for your support on the majority report.
Oliver Mulliner, give your hand up. Alderman Bram, oh, Alderman Leader, have you spoken?
Just.
Go to Alderman Leader, then Alderman Bram.
Oh.
10 o'clock.
Okay. Well, every two years, we have a new council, and every vote we make sets, makes, and remakes a precedent. Nothing is set in stone, and every vote we make is on the individual merits. I'm not too worried about a slippery slope, because we're all pretty analytical, and we will take each of these cases as they come, take them apart, put them together, vote yea or nay, but we're not, in that sense, setting a precedent.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. One of the clarifications, as I was just listening to comments and rereading the majority report, the statements here were in regards to revenue, and I was looking at the TIF application again. Is this sales tax on the majority report, is that for the location that is being proposed only? Or is it the sales tax for the combined park as well as the proposed location? It wasn't clear to me if it was for just this proposed location or for both, and if it is only for this proposed location, I assume there's some mechanism to be able to distinguish that. But if I can ask that question, is it for both the proposed and the current Oneon Park, or is it just for the?
Just for the proposed, Alderman Bram.
Just for the proposed?
Yeah.
Well, then, according to the majority report, I mean, I don't see the sales tax revenue hitting, so I don't see on how we will be recouping any of those dollars. And just for clarification, 60,000 plus 15,000 from a $350,000 build-out is actually 20%, not the 17% that's quoted. Again, I, I think 0% is not the right number, but I, I think where we're at with the majority report, it's too rich.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Alderman Dunn.
I, I do have a couple concerns with the request, the amount, 20%, I think is a little high, and then generally, in my experience with TIF requests, is they've been much lower than that as a percent of the overall project. They've also been, almost in all cases, a pay-as-you-go basis. TIF, as the property increases in value, which would benefit the property owner, the city ends up, or the applicant ends up getting a share of that. So a couple concerns, major concerns with the, with the proposed amounts and how to go about financing it. The third concern is that this is a TIF request that's coming out of TIF funds, that this TIF is underwater now, and that, and that's in our policy, that the consideration in awarding TIF funds is also budget-driven. So that's why the pay-as-you-go is, is much more attractive, because as the, as the property creates increment, it deposits back into the TIF while the applicant also gets some of that. However, I think that the, looking at taking the curb cut out, I think that's important, it's, it's very consistent with our North York Plan, and this type of development in general is very, is consistent with our North York Plan. I'd like the request to be a little lower, and I do have some concerns with it, but I would support the request even with those concerns. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments?
Okay, so just to remind council what we're going to vote on, there's a motion before us to substitute, so the first vote's going to be on to substitute. Now, if that motion fails, we go to, back to the majority report and have another vote. If the motion passes, it officially substitutes, and then we have a vote on that report. Everyone clear? So this vote is on the motion to substitute only, the minority for the majority. Right? Any questions? Got it? Hope I made that clear? Clerk Spencer.
Leader.
Nay.
Done. Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Substitution, no.
York.
Aye.
Pluto.
No.
Heely, absent, Levin.
No.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
No.
Mulliner.
No.
Deuter.
No.
Sabatino.
No.
So that's three ayes, 10 nays, and one absent.
Three ayes, 10 nays, motion to substitute fails. Back to our original motion. Back to our original motion, which is approval of the majority report. Any additional conversation? Clerk Spencer?
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram. Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent, Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Nope.
Hunquist.
Nope.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
10 ayes, 3 nays, 1 absent.
10 ayes, 3 nays, motion carries. 8.3 majority report is approved. My only comment is I appreciate everyone for their hard work. I do think that, and I know it's been conversation, I do think that we are looking for some policies as it relates to incentives up there. I think it's something that should be tackled sooner than later. I also think that we've talked more about this North York corridor in the past two years than we did in the previous eight years on the council. I think that says something for the planning that this council has done. It's exciting to see people interested in investing up there. So, move on. Reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. Okay. Taking into account the time, which is 5 after 10, I will try to shorten a little bit of what I was going to say, but bear with me. Recently, there have been comments made at public meetings and in the press, and I feel it's necessary for some sort of a response. The city enjoys what I'll call a necessary and complex relationship with District 205, the school district in town. Now, recent comments have been made about the 2004 agreement for a TIF extension and release of some property. Now, I'm going to attempt to only address facts in my statement. Back in 2004, the schools were in financial hardship, and the schools approached the city for help. They requested a surplus out of TIF 1. At the time, due to the design of the TIF and having an overlaid sales tax TIF, a surplus was not possible without refunding all of the money that we had received already in our sales tax TIF. But with some creative thinking, the city was able to release nine properties that had been fully developed inside of TIF 1. School shortfall was $1 million. The city released from the TIF properties that had an increment of $1 million. So not only did the schools get $1 million in increment, it was an increment in perpetuity. It wasn't just a one-time offer. Due to the timing of the release, the schools would only enjoy about half of that in the first year. In addition, for the city to help them with that gap, we declared at the same time a surplus of $734,000 out of TIF 2 to help the schools in their time of need. Part of this release included an IGA between the schools and the city of Elmhurst. We worked longer, now, I wasn't around in 2004, but I've read everything that we have on it that's in the record. The agreement allowed the city to extend our TIF. The agreement also allowed for the city to pay for capital projects within that TIF and consider any capital needs within that TIF prior to declaring a surplus. It's in the contract. In fact, if you go back to 2004 and read some of the press clippings, because there was not a guarantee of surplus, with, because there was the exception of potential capital projects, the agreement did not enjoy the full support of the school district. In fact, the vote was four to three, with the three dissenting members stating that the agreement wasn't tight enough and did not guarantee a surplus. In fact, there was even conversation and ask from the schools to the city to change the, change the wording, and the city disagreed at that time. So, we did enter into agreement. We did release property with an increment of $1 million. We also released a surplus out of TIF 2 for $734,000. In addition, in 2006, we did an additional release of property of an increment of $450 total for the taxing bodies, which resulted in an additional $315,000 a year for the school district. We also did a release in 2007 of $350,000 worth of property that had an, or increment that resulted in $250,000 to the schools in perpetuity. As I said, I wasn't there in 2004, but the agreement is very specific as to how to calculate a surplus, how it will be declared, and whether or not capital projects were included. In fact, when we were releasing additional property in 2006, Alderman Jan Vanek, who was head of our finance department, specifically made a note, "We still have capital projects to do within the downtown TIF area. We're being as aggressive as we can, but we still have projects to do in the downtown TIF area." That was in a direct response to a school question if we could release more property. In addition, I've also had our city attorney review the 2004 agreement to see if we are in violation of that agreement. In our attorney's opinion and multiple attorneys within his firm, we are not in violation of that agreement. Back to our relationships with the schools. As most of you know, I was elected in 2013. Alderman Levin already mentioned, we had a bit of a storm issue right about the time I was elected. I immediately formed a committee between parks and schools to have conversations, to move projects forward. We did a study in 2010, and we knew what was needed, barring some details about what we could do to address our flooding problems. Because we're a mature community, our solutions, our most cost-effective solutions included cooperation of parks and schools. We met in private meetings for about two years, between 2013 and mid-2015. Then in June in 2015, we had a major storm event, and I think a lot of frustration boiled over with a lot of people in the process. I'm one of them. So after that storm event, I demanded, maybe a little heavy-handed at the time, but I demanded that we now continue to hold our meetings in public. And we did. We started holding our meetings in public with both the schools and the parks. And from when I demanded, again, a little heavy-handed on my part, that we have these meetings, the schools and parks participated from about the end of June to the beginning of September. We completed all of our agreements with the park district. Now, we didn't get everything we wanted, they didn't get everything they wanted, but we completed all of our agreements with the park district in principle between June and September. At that time with the schools, we completed one agreement. We completed Madison, which is under construction. Around the beginning of September, I don't know the exact date, I think it's the first or second week of September of 2015, the school board informed us they would no longer participate in these public meetings. At the time, we were working on the Bryan Junior High project. We thought we were very close on a agreement, and we asked the schools if they would continue to meet in public so the public could witness the issues and challenges that both groups were facing. The schools insisted on not attending these meetings and taking the meetings back into private, insisting that they would be more productive. At the, at the last public meeting that we had, members of the Elmhurst City elected officials asked, "Do you think we can get it done by the end of 2015?" We're now in 2017. I would ask the members of the council and the public, "Do they think that these meetings have been productive?" I would say that we're failing at these private meetings to further our stormwater cause with the schools. Now, recently, the schools have tied TIF surplus to stormwater. Not my doing, not our doing, but theirs. I don't know why, and that's fine. If the schools want to talk about TIF surplus and they want to talk about stormwater at the same time, I can chew gum and walk, and we can too. What I don't think works is continued public meetings. I can tell you, in three and a half years as mayor, I have offered, requested, asked, and called for dozens of meetings. I don't know how many calls I've gotten back asking for a meeting from the other side. Now, I know the school board has issues when negotiating in public, and normally I would too. But we're not buying land from a private party. We're not buying equipment, equipment from a private party. We're talking about public land, public tax dollars, public schools, and public safety. Everything we do and every agreement we have will be public. Because the private meetings are not working, I think we need to change. Now, we have a pending ask with the schools. Our Burke Report, which everyone's aware of, has construction projects at Bryan, Jackson, and York High School. Now, I won't get into details, but I do think it's important to go back to a 35,000-feet point of view. Let's take Bryan, for example. Bryan is the largest project in the Burke Report that remains in the Burke Report. 23-acre feet. It provides some level of flood relief to 122 homes in Elmhurst. We're asking to use the southwest corner of Bryan that, based on every elected official, past and present that I've talked to, has not been developed or used in over 70 years. It's been a gravel pit. Right now, it's a dumping ground. Hasn't been used in 70 years. We've known since 2010 that this is a key. I am hoping that we can move forward on this. There are also needs at Jackson and York High School. In addition, in 2003, the city also came to the assistance of District 205 when they wanted to rebuild York High School. The superintendent at that time signed a variance agreement with the city in which they committed to almost $1.2 million to help us with stormwater mitigation. To date, we have not received that. Back to negotiating. You know, it's, you know, it's a bad joke when the press actually comes up to you and says, "Hey, Mayor Morley, do you want to negotiate with the schools and the press?" They even see what's going on. I don't want to negotiate in the press. I feel like Groundhog Day. This is where we were almost two and a half years ago, when we were doing he-said, she-said back and forth at the meetings. I think it's unproductive. I am proposing, and I will send an email asking, not demanding, to President Ebner and Superintendent Moyer, that we begin our public meetings again. I think it's important for the public to understand our needs. I think it's important for the public to understand the school board's needs. But I think it's important that it happens in public. The private meetings aren't working, and misinformation happens when you talk to each other through the press. Now, speaking of the press, I'll take it with a grain of salt. God knows I love the press, but here they are. They're covering a three-and-a-half-hour meeting, and they're going to have to do it in about four or five paragraphs. So, I'm going to say what I read in the press, I'm going to take with a grain of salt. However, the school's currently working on a referendum, the, the school currently has a referendum committee. I'm not familiar with what the committee's doing and what process that referendum committee is at, and I've learned a long time ago not to poke my nose into somebody's business when they're doing their planning. I don't have the facts. But I was surprised to learn in the press that a possible referendum would be needed if the city didn't help with TIF surplus. I'm not sure how that works with their current referendum committee, but I was surprised to read that. The other thing I read in the press, it was referenced by more than one person, so I know that there was least discussion, is threatening to sue another governmental body. Imagine my surprise when I read on the front page, "School Board considers suing the city." I think talk of suing another governmental body at this level is careless and dangerous. Threatening to sue somebody does not promote communication. It shuts down communication. The residents of Elmhurst expect more from both bodies. The other thing I read in the paper, and I read it every time we kind of get into this argument, is whose tax dollars are more important? Well, is, are the tax dollars that I get from the city more important if I want to build a metro station? Or are the school board tax dollars more important if they want to help build a school? Or maybe the city's tax dollars are more important if we want to work on stormwater because that's safety? I think that's a bunch of garbage. It's the citizens' tax dollars. Every tax dollar is the same and needs to be treated equally. The school has needs, and the city has needs. And if we don't work together, we're going to spend money that we don't need to. Not only do the schools have needs, but the cities have needs. Most importantly, bottom line, the residents of Elmhurst have needs. If we don't do this together, if we don't work together to meet our needs, everybody loses. So I'm going to reiterate my call, and I will follow up with an email. Last time I sent an email before I gave a speech, this time I'm going to send it after. I'm going to send an email to President Ebner and Dave Moyer and invite them to a meeting in public so that they can explain their needs to the public, and we can explain our needs to the public. And then both sides can explain how we can work together to help the public. I think that's it for my report. City Manager Grabowski.
One item, and it's a follow-up to one of the agenda items. Earlier, the council approved the, the report for the Golden Meadows appraisal. I will be delivering a letter to the executive director of the Park District tomorrow, letting him know this, and to start moving that process forward with the IDNR for certification and completion of the IGA. That's all that I have.
Any other reports? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report on and thank you for the letter dated January 12th of this year to Commissioner Evans, which is the commissioner of the Chicago Department of Aviation, regarding the Fly Quiet Runway Rotation Plan Test, and how the city of Elmhurst as a whole strongly objects or opposes this program moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bram. Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, thank you for your comments regarding the situation that we all read about. The real reason I'm making a report tonight, though, pertains to the recent water and sewer rate increase. If the council will remember, we, as one of the components of the increase, we outlined a potential for a 5% increase from the DuPage Water Commission. That's not something that's actually on the bill now, because as everybody probably remembers, we had different components of our water billing, and we actually reduced the water component of it last May when they reduced their rates. The DuPage Water Commission is doing a much better job of managing their business and taking care of the residents who are utilizing their water distribution services. And I just want to make it clear that there is no increase in the increase now. They will be determining their actual rate about May 1st, and we just put a provision in our report that we anticipate that there will be an increase, and it could be up to 5%. But it'll be what it'll be. There is no increase in the water rate. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn?
Just want to give a quick update on the meeting that I attended, the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission meeting last Friday, the 13th, to represent Elmhurst. As you know, the, the ONCC has a ad hoc Fly Quiet Committee that has pushed forward a runway rotation plan that ended last Christmas Day, the six-month trial pilot program, whatever you want to call it. And the, the information we got at the, the last meeting, Mr. Joe Nunzio, who chairs that committee, expressed some support for extending that program. What is going on now is the, that ad hoc committee is looking at some of the data that has been gathered from the runway rotation plan. They're evaluating it along with the CDA. And they are going to tweak the program, make adjustments, and try to push forward a recommendation to, to modify the program and start that again in the second half of this year. So, the committee, the ad hoc Fly Quiet Committee, is going to meet twice in February to discuss that, and then the ONCC.
and then the ONCC will meet March 10th to vote on that. And based on the results of that vote, we'll make a recommendation to the CDA to either not proceed with the modified runway rotation program or to go ahead and move it forward. And that would also need FAA concurrence on that. So, that's the timeline, two meetings for the ad hoc committee in February, and then the ONCC will vote March 10th.
Okay. Any other reports? Alderman Levin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a brief report or a comment on the hoop house issue. There's a lot of publicity about it, and I think I've talked to about half of you about the issue. But I wanted to clarify is that, and I've responded to all the people who wrote to me, including the owner of the property that has the hoop house, we really have to look at, there's two things going on, and one of them I think we can't participate in, and that's there's an adjudication hearing for an ordinance violation, and that will have to be handled through the adjudication process. And I know there's, and I'm not weighing in on it, but we have a, I think about two years ago, we did a, at the, I think we were on the committee, we did a review of the building code, and it's fairly complex because it's almost, there's the building code that we have. It references the International Building Code and some other building codes, certain components, and then there are some exceptions to the International Building Code. So, we could say, "Here's our code. We adopt International Building Code, except we don't adopt this part." And this issue, as it stands right now, is about, in my opinion, membrane structures, which is the material out of which the hoop house is constructed. And we do have a specific provision that says, quote, "Membrane structures are not permitted, period, residential areas." So, the adjudication and what happened, and I don't want to weigh in on who at the city said what, but what the ordinance violation is or isn't has to be decided there. From that point, it, and if the adjudication is that there was no violation, then the city can say, "Well, we think we should look at it to prohibit them." If there is a decision by the adjudicator that there wasn't a violation, that there was a violation, the city may want to look at it and say, "Should we reconsider the policy of preventing membrane structures for hoop houses?" But I think that adjudication process won't be done until the end of this month, and I think it's important, just as you hear things about what's going on and as you hear people comment about it, that we understand there's sort of two different processes, and we don't really have a participation in the first, and we may or may not in the second.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay. Seeing none, we go on to Agenda Item 10, 10.1. It's an ordinance. I'd ask Clerk Spencer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a release and settlement agreement by and between AT&amp;T Corp. and the city of Elmhurst. See Item 7.14 on the agenda.
Okay. It was in the agenda, right?
7.14, the, okay.
So, to put this forward, counsel, I will ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman York, seconded by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, comment? Are you good?
I'd just like to explain it because
Sure, absolutely.
in the public's eye, we're doing a really bad thing here. But we've suspended the rules because a refund basically was worked on between AT&amp;T, who overcharged us for services for a period of time. So, it's a refund of about forty-three thousand dollars, and we needed to suspend the rules this evening because the letter of agreement expires at the end of the month. And if we don't pass this ordinance tonight, we can't take advantage of the forty-three thousand dollars refund. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent, Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hunquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. On to other business. Any other business? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, seconded by Alderman Hunquist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.